Welcome to this virtual hearing of the Public Accountability Committee's inquiry into the New South Wales Government's handling of the COVID-19 pandemic. Before I commence, I'd like to acknowledge the Gadigal people, who are the traditional owners of the land upon which the parliament sits, pay our collective respects to elders past, present and emerging, and pay those respects to any First Nations peoples participating in the hearing and also joining us through the webcast. Today's hearing is again to be a fully, to be a fully virtual hearing, which enables the work of the committee to continue during the COVID-19 pandemic without compromising the health and safety of witnesses, members and staff. I would ask for everyone's patience if we do have any glitches or difficulties with the technology, and again, if participants do lose their connection, please do rejoin by the link that was sent to you by the secretariat. Today's hearing will continue the committee's focus on the New South Wales Government's plan and roadmap out of lockdown, and we will hear evidence from chief, from the Chief Health Officer, Ms Kerry Chant, from Ms Susan Pearce, the Controller of the State Health Emergency Operations Centre, and from Dr Nigel Lyons, the Deputy Secretary, Health Systems Strategy and Planning for New South Wales Health. Before we commence, I'd like to make a few brief comments about today's hearings. While parliamentary privilege applies to what is said in the hearing, it does not apply to comments that are made outside of the hearing, so I'd ask members and witnesses to bear that in mind. Committee hearings are not intended as a platform to provide adverse reflections on individuals, so I'd ask all participants to stick to the issues rather than the personalities. All witnesses have a right to procedural fairness, it's a matter this committee takes seriously, and it's also consistent with the resolution of the House. If any witness feels they cannot answer a question but would benefit from having access to other documents to assist, they are entitled to take a question on notice and provide a response within 21 days. But of course, it is of great assistance to the committee if whatever information can be given during the course of the hearing. Today's proceedings have been broadcast live by the Parliament's website, and a recording will be uploaded to the Parliament's YouTube channel. As always, a professional written transcript will be provided by hand side. A few notes, if I could, on virtual hearing etiquette. Can I ask committee members to identify who questions are directed to? And can I ask everybody, witnesses and members, to state their name when they begin speaking? Members should also use the raise your hand function if they wish to take a point of order, and could everybody please try and refrain from speaking over each other if at all possible? I remember those witnesses and members, I remind witnesses and members, that before you speak, it is always preferable to take yourself off mute, and it's preferable to place yourself on mute at the end of a contribution as well. Also to assist hand side, may I remind members and witnesses wherever possible to speak directly into the microphone. I now formally welcome our witnesses, all three of you. Thank you very much for attending today. Thank you also for the countless hours you've been devoting to the people of New South Wales in your work within public, within New South Wales Health. And I'm sure I speak on behalf of the entire committee, where we pass on our collective gratitude to all of the employees in New South Wales Health. The people working in the administration, the nurses, the doctors, the other attendants at our hospitals and in the health service, we owe you a great debt of gratitude, and we're deeply thankful for the work you do. There is now an opportunity for any of the three witnesses, if you wish, to make a brief opening.
No, thank you, Mr Shubridge.
Dr Lyons?
Thanks, Mr Shubridge.
All right, well, with that then, I will hand over to the opposition to commence questioning.
Thank you. My question is to Dr Chant. We're looking at 70% double vaccination around Monday, the 11th of October, a day that we're all very looking forward to. Can I just ask you, in terms of the 80% double dose, are you projecting that to be on or around the 25th of October?
Obviously, there are multiple factors that influence when we get to that 80%, but we are looking that the 80% second dose will occur very shortly, probably within two weeks of us reaching the 70% threshold, and maybe sooner, we've been very pleased with the incredible response of the community.
Thank you. My question is really just, thank you for that. My questions really just go to, I suppose, where the DOD modeling is at between 70 and 80%, and what that's going to mean in practice around the sort of test, trace and isolation. Are you, are you going to revise what a close contact is, and when will that occur?
So, we will, we're currently formulating what test trace and isolate looks at, looks like at 70 and 80%, but I would like to assure the community that the work that we've put in place during this period will, will translate to the approach we'll take. So some of the ways in which we've scaled contact tracing, so that the community can expect to get an SMS text message when they are positive, and then there'll be advice provided, we will be assessing people's risk, high-risk exposures during that time. And so a lot of the detail about how that might work differently, but the key elements of contact tracing in terms of the prioritisation on household contacts and complex settings and high-risk settings will continue to be a feature, and we have taken significant steps to automate and use technology wisely as we prepare for a setting where we will see higher case burden, but potentially a time when we haven't got the same impact on the health system because of the vaccination. So we are expecting cases in vaccinated individuals, but we're expecting them to be less severe because of the effects of the vaccine.
So does that mean in practical terms, you know, if someone comes in contact with a case, they're considered a close contact, they would be treated differently if they were vaccinated or unvaccinated?
We are looking currently at the evidence around the risk of transmission, including the vaccination status of both the person with COVID and the person that they're exposed to, will all be influenced by that. And certainly, evidence is evolving, but certainly, your risk of acquiring COVID is very greatly reduced if you've been fully vaccinated.
So just to be clear, what I'm asking is that, look, there's obviously the two different, I'm particularly interested in the difference in those two weeks between 70 and 80%, but I'm also interested in post-80%. You know, if someone comes into contact, pubs are opening up, someone comes into contact with a case, a positive case, you know, within a pub, will they, their isolation requirements be different if they're vaccinated or unvaccinated? Is that something that is being contemplated?
So we are working through these issues now. I think it's important to understand the other controls that are in place at the time when we get to 70%. So at 70%, there will be, the workers in the hotel or cafe, as your example, will be fully vaccinated. They will be wearing masks at all times. Alcohol will be served in seated arrangements, and people will be seated. There will be strict COVID safety plans, and there will be bookings limited to a smaller number of booking, booking size. All of this means that your chances of coming into contact as you eat a meal at a cafe will be, coming in contact with someone who's COVID positive will be greatly reduced, and your risk of transmitting it will be greatly reduced as well, because most of the people, all of the people apart from children of vaccinated adults in those settings will be protected significantly by through the vaccination, being vaccinated.
Yeah, thanks for that. And look, I understand all of those things, and they're obviously the sort of public health order, you know, social distancing measures. I'm really asking about what the impact is on people, which is the biggest impact on their lives, which is whether they have to isolate or not, and whether there will, there's likely to be a difference in terms of whether that, leaving aside whether they're a close contact or not, but whether there's going to be differential isolating requirements for people, whether they're vaccinated or unvaccinated.
So we are currently finalising that advice to government, but I can say that vaccination status, the fact that people have, wearing masks, the fact that people have got other controls like COVID safety plans, reduces your chance of being a close contact, because if you haven't come in contact with someone within that.
Sure, no, look, I understand that, and I appreciate that.
So we are, we are currently providing that advice to government, and we're currently drawing the best available evidence to support an appropriate way for contact tracing, both at 70 and 80%, and contemplating beyond that as well.
Sure, but just to be clear, are you contemplating different isolation requirements for people, whether they are vaccinated or unvaccinated? It's still just, it's a very specific question.
We are open to the evidence about the like, factoring in the likelihood of your acquiring infection being differential if you are vaccinated or not vaccinated, and factoring that into our considerations. Currently, those considerations are going to government, but I can strongly support the fact that if you are vaccinated, you receive your two doses, and your two weeks to three weeks past that time, you have significantly reduced your risk of acquiring the infection.
Thank you. But just to the contact tracing now, so the contact tracing is essentially going to be far more automated, is that correct?
We've taken this opportunity as we've had to, to some extent, learn and modify. We're going to be focusing very much on high-risk areas, so we see the household as a particularly high risk, and so we'll have a strong focus on making sure that household contacts are aware, and that they are appropriately quarantining, and that they're tested. We will also, we've also learnt a lot about workplaces, because, and we're working with industry on a range of measures in workplaces, including things like rapid antigen testing, and we've, you know, also provided advice to industry around things like T rooms and other sites where transmission's occurring, to really reduce the risk of transmission in workplaces. And we will continue to refine our guidance about what risks exist in workplaces and how to minimise those, and what actions to take. Every workplace is different, and the risk of transmission in different workplaces is different, and we've required a lot of that information, a lot of that information, and are working proactively with industry. We've done a lot of work with construction and a lot of work with supermarkets to understand the nature of that risk, and pleasing, sorry, I shouldn't say this pleasingly, I should say that we're learning that a lot of the transmission risks actually is not necessarily public-facing risk, it's risk more around the workplace, the work colleagues, and the fact that people tend to let me guard down when you're in settings like T rooms or social settings and interactions, and we'll have to keep on reinforcing that as we make this transition, but they've been some of the key learnings for us.
Can I just ask you, just, I suspect you're going to have to take this on notice, so I'm interested in how many contact tracing staff there are currently, how many there were at the peak, and how many you're expecting to have post-October 11?
Could I just say a lot, but I will take that on notice in terms of giving you the numbers, but I think it's important to say that we've also ensuring that we're, we're very pleased that currently, I think, you know, when we're texting messages out to people and we've got embedded questions, it's pleasing to see that about 40 to 50% of respondents are using that technology. We're also looking at questionnaires that are much, that will facilitate our scale-up. So through this period, contact tracing hasn't been fixed, we've had to evolve contact tracing and learn what it looks like at scale using technology, and I'm just grateful to the community who have, who have worked with us. There's been some bumpy bits, I'm not saying it's at all been perfect, it's been far from that at some points, but what's been important is we are, you know, bedding the system down for that, you know, higher case load in the context of a highly vaccinated population.
And how does that work with the QR codes? I mean, the government's basically indicated that the QR codes are going to be voluntary from, you know, from December, and, you know, they've been, I assume, been extremely important, having had to have a test myself as a result of being in a shop where they obviously picked up someone with a case. How is, how is, how comfortable are you with the sort of, I suppose, changing the arrangements around the QR codes and contact tracing, your ability to let people know when they've been in contact with a case as we open up?
I think that aggressively as we come to have COVID as a endemic disease, as part of what we have to recognise, the threat always exists, there will be a little bit more individual responsibility in assessing their own comfort level in certain environments. So I think that we are still looking at how the QR code system is there, and I think that will be discovered in due course. I think one of the things to say is, the roadmap has been the roadmap, but obviously, we continue to learn as we've done through the pandemic. So I'm very reluctant to say one thing or the other about the QR codes, it's been very useful, and we will continue to look at how we use them at 70 and 80%, and then we'll keep an open mind as we progress through that, through that period.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr Chant, I might ask you, you've given us a date for 70%, a rough date for 80%, and you've indicated you'd like to see vaccination go above 90%, which I thought your comments on that were really encouraging for the community. When do you expect we'll reach 90%?
Look, I've seen some projections, I mean, again, this is very rubbery as all things, but I would be really very keen that we, we believe we will get first dose 90% by the end of next week.
And second dose 90%?
The second dose 90% should follow within a period of four to five weeks or six weeks after that, given the interval. Most people have an interval of three weeks for the Pfizer, four weeks for the Moderna, and if anyone's received AstraZeneca, our guidance is somewhere between four, four to six weeks. And so rapidly, once you get that first dose into people, you then get the second dose. And whilst I'm pleased we get to 90%, I don't want to stop there, as you've indicated, I think I want to, you know, see it well go up above 92, 93% double dose. And can I just add how pleased I am with the uptake in the 12 to 15-year-olds? We've got around 50% of 12 to 15-year-olds that have had one dose of the vaccine, and I'm anticipating that again will convert to double, at least 50% double-dosed in three or four weeks' time, given the interval, because they will both be getting Pfizer and Moderna. And I'm confident that that rate of growth of the 12 to 15-year-olds has been growing quite significantly every day, and so again, I'm very optimistic that we'll have incredibly high coverage in that age group as well.
As my colleague was asking, Minister Domeneo has been very upfront that once we hit that 90%, he'd like to see the QR codes, the check-in turned off. Is it, what is the exact date that's envisaged for that? Is it as we hit December, as we hit 90%, which might be just slightly after that one December day?
My understanding is government has made the decision, which is clearing the roadmap, that we're doing 70%, some more, slightly easing at 80%, and then we hold to watch the effect. And I'm very pleased about that, because we do need a long enough period to see any effect on numbers, and during that time, I'm hoping that immunisation rates continue to climb, and that we have taken the opportunity to continue the intensive work that is going on, to make sure that there is no disparity in vaccination in homeless people, social housing.
Yes, no, exactly.
So, so for me, my understanding is we are not going to be changing anything until we get to the 1st of December. So we're having the 70%, the 80%, and then the roadmap says we hold things until the 1st of December.
Yeah, and so when Minister Domeneo said that, switching off the, the check-ins, that's really his view, that's yet to be agreed, that.
Look, I could not comment on, I'm sorry, I just am not familiar with Minister Domeneo's statement, the context, how that was used. As I said, my understanding is that we have got 70%, the 80%, and then we are reasonably holding our settings constant for a long enough period, so that we really understand that impact, and I think that's incredibly important. And also, the other message to the community is to try and lift our immunisation coverage even further during that, during that period.
If those, just staying on that theme, one final question, if those codes go off though, it is a real change to the way we have contact traced in New South Wales, isn't it? Are you comfortable with losing that capacity out of the health system if we shift to that voluntary approach? That'd be a very different environment.
I think that, I really can't comment on Minister Domeneo's comments then, but I think that it's suffice to say we will need to evolve what we do as COVID becomes more commonplace and as immunisation becomes high, and assess the utility of all our actions and the steps we take. As I said, there are a range of other controls, such as mask-wearing, distancing, and so I think this is going to be a continual process for us to reassess and look at what things we need to have in place at certain points in time.
You've referred to vulnerable communities, and we've seen some of those pressures at the moment. Indigenous vaccination rates are still very, very low, that's, there's clearly really some federal responsibility here, although some crossover, but it's New South Wales who is making the decision to open up, and as the Premier says, to let cases go through the roof. Are you comfortable when that happens, that the indigenous communities of New South Wales, in the city or in the board, will be safe?
So, a couple of things I'd like to comment on, and I think it's important that this is understood, when we get to 11, the opening day, which is projected to be 11th of October, the 70% double dose, at that time, many regional communities will have stricter settings than they've currently got. So the only people that will be committed to be working in hotels or cafes or hairdressers will be vaccinated staff, and the only clients that will be able to attend those premises is vaccinated clients. So that will be in existence, so there may be areas in the state that are currently open to everyone. At that point, it is clear that when we switch over to that 11th of October, those settings that apply will apply across the state.
Yeah, understood, although, although some of those things will start to relax as we get 80%.
No, the requirement, the requirement of vaccination generally stays in, yeah. I would like to say.
My point is vaccination's been so important to our strategy, these communities aren't vaccinated.
Yes, I understand.
How concerned are you about that as cases rise?
So I would just like to say that I'm very keen that our indigenous communities have the highest possible protection, and for me, it's essential that they see vaccination uniformly above 90% in those communities, and I'd just like to acknowledge and ask Susan Pearce to provide the committee with some examples of the intensive work that's being done to rapidly ensure that Aboriginal people and our indigenous, you know, indigenous communities have the highest vaccination coverage possible, so Susan.
Thanks, Kerry. Mr Graham, the Aboriginal vaccination rates are also high on our agenda, so thank you for asking that question. What we are doing, as Dr Chant has said, is putting a lot of intensive effort into getting vaccination to Aboriginal communities, both in the city and in the bush, and working very closely with the Commonwealth Government in doing so, as well as primary care providers. What is pleasing, still not good enough for us, but, and we've got some really significant stretch targets around this, is that over the last month, 13 of our 15 local health districts have seen an increase in first-dose rates in their Aboriginal populations of 20 percentage points or more, and six of the 15 local health districts have seen an increase of 25 percentage points or more in the last four weeks. So New South Wales is, as I said, very focused on this. We are out of the large states, we are leading the Aboriginal vaccination rates in the country, second only to the ACT.
Well, I might just think, could you? John, the opposition round has expired.
Very good.
So we just might let Brian finish, and then we'll hand over to Ms Ferman. Had you finished the response?
Yes, thank you.
All right.
Thank you. I just wanted to, Dr Chant, what advice are you providing to cancer patients and other immunocompromised patients, as well as people living with a disability, about what to do come December the 1st?
So, I suppose I'd ask that, answer that question in a slightly, start off with the fact that I'm aware that the Australian Technical Advisory Group on Immunisation issued a statement to indicate that they were looking at the recommendations in relation to booster doses for their, their patients that are severely immunocompromised, and I believe that ATAGI's got that under active consideration, and that updated advice will be released. It wouldn't be a surprise that they might, they may well recommend booster shots to those very immunocompromised, and that would clearly fit into patients that were actively undergoing chemotherapy, or patients who had kidney transplants or other transplants as an example. And we would obviously work as a health system to support our GPs and others in implementing those recommendations very promptly, as soon as those recommendations are made by ATAGI. We all look through this, we have followed the ATAGI advice. In terms of the advice, I'd say in December, is, I will be hoping that there would be clarity, that they would have followed any updated advice, that cancer patients or any other vulnerable members of our community would have followed any advice of ATAGI in relation to additional protection that needed to be achieved through vaccination. I think it's always important that individuals speak to their doctors about their particular circumstance. If there are, if they're highly immunocompromised at a particular point in time, the doctors may give them specific advice about things to avoid, but that would apply to avoiding, you know, busy crowded settings or settings that might place them at risk of other infectious diseases as well. So I really would support people that are in the position of having significant immunocompromised to always discuss with their doctors, and I'm hoping that ATAGI will give clarity in relation to booster doses for those that might be in that particular severely immunocompromised area.
Thank you. I'm glad you clarified around booster doses as well, because that was going to be one of my next questions. But there, there are other things to consider, aren't there? Not just booster doses for those people, of course, some of them can't get vaccinated as well. Also, did you take their situation into consideration when the advice was given in relation to removing the requirement for people to wear masks indoors?
I think it's important to say that the roadmap outlines a way forward at every point. I think I've been clear about mask-wearing is a good protection indoors, and there may be, well, specific advice we either give in, to specific groups about mask-wearing. If case numbers are high or there's other situations, we obviously continually revise. December is a long way away, and I think throughout this, we need to be flexible, pragmatic. But I would want to say that individuals that are in situations that are at higher risk, we will certainly ensure that there's advice that's tailored to them when that situation arises as well.
So Dr Chant, do you support the lifting of the provision around indoor mask-wearing on December the 1st? So Dr Chan, do you support the lifting of the provision around indoor mask wearing on December the first?
I think I would hold my advice depending on where, what case numbers are, what we've seen, and what we've seen that happened in transmission. As I said, we give, at those points, we will see what transmission's like, what the impact is occurring, and provide advice to individuals about how to mitigate them and what's appropriate for their circumstance.
So depending on where case numbers are, you're suggesting that advice may change from first of December in relation to indoor mask wearing?
I think the point I'm trying to make is that for certain individuals, we always say that, and I think we will continue to do that, once COVID is endemic with us, we will be continuing to say that everyone has to act in accordance with being at risk. Even if people are vaccinated, elderly, we know that age in itself is a significant risk factor. And so regardless of vaccination status, even though they're very effective vaccines. So we will be empowering individuals with information, which goes into the fact that these are the steps that you can take to minimise your risk. And so partly that will be individual, but at times if case numbers are very high in particular settings or we're seeing transmission, we will issue public health advice around those settings. But it is important to understand that everyone, particularly vulnerable people, people immunocompromised, people that are elderly, can still experience quite severe disease even if they're vaccinated, although vaccines are very effective. And it will be important that everyone takes individual decisions as well about the settings that they're choosing to interact with, depending on the level of COVID transmission in the community, as they would with the level of flu transmission in the community, influenza, and other infectious diseases in the community.
I've had quite a few people contact me very concerned about the removal of the requirement to wear masks indoors on the first of December. People, for example, who live in apartments who are immunocompromised. So they, of course, may need to get into lifts with people who are unvaccinated, who aren't wearing masks. Don't you think, Dr Chan, it is too soon to remove the requirement entirely for people to wear masks indoors on December the first? So what would you say to people like that, who are really expressing quite a bit of concern and fear about what it means to them to be circulating, to be like in their place of residence, in their apartment block, trying to move around with people who aren't wearing masks from the first of December? What do you say to those people?
I would just like to say that we assess the situation as, I mean, the first of December, although we're looking forward in the roadmap for December, we'll assess the, you know, in providing my public health advice, I will always look to the areas, the level of infection, the risk, and we will provide advice, some of it may be in public health orders, and some of it may be in advisories. So we will, I'll continue to monitor the situation as we go forward. And what I would suggest, if people are genuinely concerned about their situation, they need to, as a sedation, advice about boosters. But also, there's ways in which we can encourage communities to, and Stratas and others, to encourage mask wearing in indoor settings, depending on what situation we find ourselves at that time. So I'm just saying that mask wearing is being laid out as a roadmap, but nothing is set in concrete in terms of my public health advice until we get to the situation of the first of December. It's a long way off, and we need to be, give a clear outline. But at no point, I may still be saying it's the most appropriate thing to protect yourself is to wear a mask.
Okay, I just wanted to turn to a slightly different area. This is around mental health wards and rehab wards being closed down, in particular hospitals to make way for temporary COVID wards. There's been a particular incidence raised with me in relation to the closure of the mental health rehab ward at Prince of Wales Hospital in Wollongong. Some of the patients there were sent to other places, such as, for example, a men's refuge. What is happening to those patients, and do you know any idea when the mental health rehab ward will be reinstated at Prince of Wales?
Sorry, Miss Ferman.
I might take that question, Ms Ferman. So there have been, from time to time, changes to the service profile of many of our services, including mental health. So there have been changes to the configuration of our facilities to enable the appropriate care of COVID patients in a range of different environments. And we have had some challenges in mental health with the incursion of COVID virus into inpatient settings. And we've had those in a couple of sites, as you're probably aware. So there have been assessments made across all of our mental health facilities about how to make them safer for clients who are admitted or cared for in those services, as well as for the staff, while we work through these transition periods. And there've been some changes made to some of those services to make them able to separate, if there is a COVID patient in the service, that there's enough space to create safe zones for the patients who are not positive as well. And so that's led to changes in configuration and a range of different services that we offer. Now, those changes will only be in place while they're required to be in place, to ensure that we can deliver care in a way that's safe for everybody. And as soon as we get to a point where the community transmission of COVID or the vaccination rates are at a level that enable us to reconfigure our services, we will do that to make sure that there's less impact on those who've had the service changes applied to them. And this has happened in a range of different settings, in outpatient. It's happened in relation to some of our aged care facilities. It's happened in a number of cases where we've had to make service changes to reflect the need to deliver care differently. And we will only do that where it's required to be done for the amount of time that we need to, and then we'll reinstate those services to their usual configuration.
Thanks, Dr Lyons. Dr Chan, three days ago, the Premier, the Deputy Premier, the Health Minister, issued a joint release that said from one December, further changes will be introduced, including all venues moving to the two-square metre rule. Masks will not be required indoors at offices. Indoor pools and nightclubs can reopen, and unvaccinated people will have greater freedoms. Is it your understanding that that is subject to a review of how things progress up to the first of December, that that's subject to the progression of COVID in the community?
I can't speak on behalf of government, but I just would like to say that in a pandemic, we are drawing upon the best evidence. We know that vaccines are highly effective. We understand and review the DOD modelling, we're looking at international experience. And we would understand that having very high vaccine coverage in the order of the ninety-plus double dose, and that we cover twelve pluses as well, that that will afford us a great deal of protection. But I think the Premier's, all I could say is that we will continually review how we're tracking, what disease burden we're seeing, continually provide updated advice. We can draw on all of our international experience, our understanding of vaccine effectiveness, the modelling. But ultimately, we need to see how we progress over these times. And that's why I'm very pleased that we've got a period of stability between that eighth cent and the first of December, to really see what effect those changes that we've made, seventy and eighty percent have, and to see where we're going into December.
Well, you see, Dr Chan, there's no reference to any qualification from the Premier, any reviewing of the data. It's an unqualified statement from the Premier and the Deputy Premier and others. Do you support that unqualified statement that those restrictions will lift on the first of December? Is really what I'm asking you?
I can't speak for government, but I think you've seen that at every time during the pandemic, we've had to respond to changing and new information. I'm very confident that from everything I've reviewed internationally, that vaccinating, that having truly high vaccination coverage, ensuring that we've got that equally distributed across all socio-economic groups, and we've targeted our vulnerable communities, that will afford us the greatest protection. We will need still to modify the way we go about things. We'll still need to isolate when we've got diseases. We'll still need to be taking preventative, some preventative public health measures at that point, clearly. And I think that for me, I will be looking closely, week to week, on how the situation unfolds and what else we can learn internationally in informing government.
Dr Chan, you would know that a number of regional communities have very real concerns because of the relatively scarce public health resources, particularly ICU units. You'd be aware about those concerns in regional New South Wales, I'm thinking.
Clearly, I'm cognizant of the challenges that regional communities have, but I'd also defer to my colleagues to describe the fact that we have a very integrated system and a system that supports escalation of care, where people need it through a very sophisticated system. So, Ms Pearce, did you want to address those issues?
No, I don't require any further detail on that right now. Dr Lyons, maybe if you're on mute, if you're not speaking, we seem to be getting a bit of feedback.
I'm on mute.
Excellent. Dr Chan, is it envisaged that there will continue to be movement restrictions into parts of regional New South Wales until those parts of regional New South Wales themselves have sufficient vaccination rates, either seventy percent or eighty percent? Or are you looking at statewide changes, looking at the average across the state, particularly when it comes to regional travel?
So in terms of the regional travel, visitors to regions are not going to be committed until eighty percent. And then I defer to Ms Pearce to talk about the efforts that's been put in regionally to achieve those high coverage rates uniformly across our regions, which is a correct point that you make. It is important we get that uniformity of coverage.
Well, before we go to Ms Pearce, when you say eighty percent? I'm sorry, can you hear me again? It was an unusual glitch on my Surface Pro, I'm sorry. Dr Chan, when you say eighty percent, do you mean eighty percent in each LGA across regional New South Wales, or do you mean eighty percent on average across the state?
The government roadmap is related to eighty percent double dose across the state. It's been pleasing to see that whilst Sydney, greater metropolitan Sydney, had a slightly higher vaccination coverage, the regions are catching up very quickly with increased access to both Pfizer and Moderna. And some of our regional communities have some of the highest vaccination coverage that we've got. Obviously, some of the second dose coverage lags, but that should pick up quite quickly over coming weeks. And also that visitors to the regions have to be vaccinated. Unvaccinated people cannot travel to the regions.
Well, Dr Chan, it's not much comfort to somebody, say, in Burg. If they have vaccination, double dose vaccination rates at sixty percent, if there's a statewide average of eighty percent, how is that going to protect people, say, for example, in Burg, if there's such a disparity?
So, Mr Sheerbridge, I'm happy to comment with respect to rural vaccination rates, because it is something we've been heavily invested in and very focused on. So the last data that we have, rural and regional LHD, so this is as at the end of last week, are currently at eighty-two point two percent first dose, compared to metropolitan areas of eighty-four point seven. So they're two point five percent difference in the first dose rate. They are catching up very quickly with respect to that. And in fact, we now, as Dr Chan has said, we see some parts of regional New South Wales with first dose rates above ninety percent. There's been a significant amount of work that's gone into places like Burg, Braharina, et cetera, who have seen exceptional increases in their vaccination rates. And noting that we have been administering Pfizer in those communities for which we provided increased supply. We will see that convert to second doses quite quickly because they have a three-week time interval. So the rural vaccination rates, in fact, actually, the LGAs presently, there are only four LGAs currently below a seventy percent first dose rate, with two of them in the high sixties. And all of those have got intensive efforts going into them. So the rural vaccination rates and any suggestion that they're being left behind is not correct.
Ms Lyons, I'm not asking about averages, because an average doesn't protect somebody if they're in a local government area which has a lower-than-average rate. So I'm asking again, is it envisaged there will be unlimited travel to regional New South Wales for vaccinated people, including into LGAs that have vaccination, double-dose vaccination rates less than eighty percent? So is that the policy?
Just for the record, Mr Sheerbridge, my surname is Pearce.
Oh, sorry, sorry, Ms Pearce.
Quite all right. The issue is that we, I appreciate what you're saying with respect to LGA data, and we understand that. What we do is look at postcode data. So we did beneath the LGA level, so that we're focused very heavily on not just dealing with that, but really then throwing our effort and energy into ensuring that any town who requires the intensive efforts, noting that we're not the only people vaccinating in New South Wales. Our Commonwealth partners are out there, the pharmacists, the GPs, the RFDS. We've had support from the ADF, et cetera, which is why New South Wales, in fact, has the highest vaccination rate of any large state in Australia. So we are very, very focused on regional New South Wales. And I think Dr Chan can respond to the question in terms of travel, that she has already noted that the vaccinated nature of people travelling into regional New South Wales is obviously on our agenda. And by the time that changes, I would expect to see the rural areas of our state have a very high vaccination rate indeed.
What is the current double-dose vaccination rate for Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people in New South Wales?
Just have a look for that. Again, if I just might say, while I'm looking for that, the Aboriginal communities, again, it's not just in rural New South Wales, but right across the state are an area of increased and ongoing focus for us with the Commonwealth. So at the moment, they're about sixty percent first dose for our Aboriginal population. But as I noted earlier, Mr Sheerbridge, in the last four weeks-
My question was very distinct, at a point, was just what is the current double-dose rate for Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people in New South Wales?
It's sitting around forty percent.
And how does that compare to the state average?
I'll have to look for that, Mr Sheerbridge, I don't have it right in front of me.
Dr Chan, across the state, the double-dose rate is above sixty-two percent?
The double-dose rate across- Yeah, it's around sixty-two percent, yeah.
So I'm going to ask you the final question in this round. Given such a proportion of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people in the regions, of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people live in the regions of New South Wales, with such a disparity on double-dose rates, is it your health advice, Dr Chan, that there can be unrestricted travel to those regions, particular regions with high proportions of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people, unvaccinated people, once there's a state average of eighty percent double dose? Is that your public health advice?
The protections that are in place at that point are that only vaccinated people can travel. As I said, we look at all of the circumstances involved, remembering at that time as well that the only people in venues such as gyms, parks and clubs, cafes, et cetera, will be vaccinated people. I think it is clear that there is a priority for Aboriginal communities, and we are very keen to work on Aboriginal communities. But as you also understand, Mr Sheerbridge, the Aboriginal communities are very connected, and so, and very, there is still a lot of movement usually around households because of the close connectivity within- there is still a lot of movement usually around households because of the close connectivity within Aboriginal communities. And so, what we've seen emerge is really the movement of people within the Aboriginal communities as well that we really need to address from a public health perspective. And we need to work in partnership with those communities. We need to work in partnership with our Aboriginal community control, in our partnership with our primary health networks, to ensure that everyone has access to the vaccine. Also concerned that we support those communities with, there's been also some misinformation in some of those communities, and so we need to redouble our efforts to ensure that everyone is afforded the opportunity and we really support and work in partnership with the communities to get them vaccinated. So, we do, we are strongly aware and we need to put in a range of public health measures, including working with those communities to prevent incursions into the Aboriginal communities.
All right, thank you, Dr. Chant. I'll hand back to the opposition. But Dr. Chant and Ms. Pearce, no, I'm sorry, Ms. Pearce, I misidentified you, I truly didn't mean this, I apologize. Could you please just commence your answers, putting your name on the record to make it, to assist Hensard? So, Ms. Pearce here, Dr. Chant here, at the commencement of your answers, and I hand over to the opposition.
Thanks very much, Mr. Chair. Dr. Chant, today is the last day for health workers to receive their first vaccination. Mandatory requirements kick in. What's the figure at that today's date of health workers who remain unvaccinated?
Ms. Hughes, I'm sorry, we just had a little bit of trouble hearing you then.
Oh, sorry, is that, can you hear me now?
That's a bit better, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. Today's the last day for health workers to be vaccinated as part of the mandatory requirements. What is the figure at that today's date of healthcare workers who are unvaccinated?
It's just over two and a half percent.
And how many actual workers are vaccinated?
I'd have to take that on notice, Ms. Hughes.
Are you able to provide any information about a breakdown of where those workers are? Like, what geographically where they are?
Again, Ms. Pearce, we'd have to take that on notice, I haven't got that information in front of me at the moment.
Have you, what planning have you done to ensure that those two point five percent of physicians are able to be filled going forward?
There's been extensive work done by my colleagues in workforce here at the ministry to work with all of our local health districts to understand any areas of impact. We believe that at present, the impact will be minimal and the discussions with our local health districts are ongoing, obviously, to ensure that any risk associated with that is managed.
So, are you able to provide us with any general insights about where specifically you are looking at those gaps?
Again, I'm sorry, Ms. Hughes, I'll have to take that one on notice.
Okay, so is it correct that all of those workers will be stood down as of this evening if they have not been vaccinated?
Look, there are a range of options in place. Obviously, unpaid leave is certainly part factored into this issue. The system is looking and reviewing appropriate applications for leave. Paid leave, that is, if people have entitlements, but again, they have to be appropriate and not used in a way to avoid this situation. But, you know, I think that it goes without saying that clearly this is an issue that the system takes very seriously. There are a range of other vaccinations that are mandatory in our system and have been for many, many years. And I think that on balance, this is the right thing for our health system, which is why the decision has been taken.
Perhaps you can provide on notice how many applications for paid and unpaid leave have been provided, have been received at this stage? And how many have been approved?
Thank you.
Yes, okay, great. If you can, I mean, that's a pretty significant jump, we've seen three percent since Tuesday. What specific efforts have been involved to increase that level of vaccination?
Look, as you'd be aware, since the commencement of the vaccine rollout, healthcare workers, not just our own healthcare workers in New South Wales Health, but indeed any healthcare worker in New South Wales, and from quite early on in the vaccine rollout, has been welcomed to New South Wales Health Clinics. We have made vaccination for our staff as easy as humanly possible, which is why we have got a rate of over ninety-three point, ninety-seven point three percent of a very large workforce vaccinated, so that result is pleasing. You know, our message to our workforce, of course, is that it is, you know, it's never too late, please. Come forward and get vaccinated along with your colleagues that have done in such large numbers. But, you know, our job is to look after our workers. And I think on this occasion, that includes, you know, offering them vaccination. It's a very important measure for their own safety, as well as the safety of those around them.
Do you have figures on how many teachers will be vaccinated on the eighteenth of October?
No, I don't. However, we certainly have, again, you know, welcome teachers into the New South Wales Health Vaccination Centers. And you'd be aware, with our LGA's, our initial LGA's are concerned. We did some very specific work for teachers in those LGA's. But I do not know the figure, that would be a question perhaps for the Department of Education.
So, you're not tracking those figures?
Ms. Hughes, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I've just, Ms. Pearce and Dr. Chant, I've had another request from Hensard. If you could commence your answers by saying, Ms. Pearce or Dr. Chant, it would really assist them. And I know it's, I know it's somewhat iterative, but it would assist Hensard.
Certainly.
Sorry, Ms. Pearce, so you aren't collating that data, that's the Department of Education that's collating that data?
Dr. Chant has something to add there, Ms. Hughes. The Department of Education is monitoring that situation closely because it does link to their return to school plans and the requirement around teachers being, only vaccinated teachers being present, that's the return to school.
Okay, thanks very much, Dr. Chant. In terms of the requirement, Dr. Chant, when the, when students do return to school on the eighteenth of November, what will the requirements be for schools to close and isolate if there is a case at a school?
So, we are currently working through an updated incident action plan. So, you're probably aware that schools have been operational throughout for those students that cannot be cared for otherwise or schooled from home because of either the essential workers or for other reasons. So, we have been responding to cases in schools throughout. I think some of the factors that will change our approach has been the rapid and pleasing uptake in our twelve to fifteen-year-olds. I was reviewing some of the data and today, by local government, government error, and it's just amazing that some of our regional communities, there was one community, I think, that had a hundred and twenty-nine, if there are a hundred and thirty-three twelve to fifteen-year-olds vaccinated. So, obviously, that school that those students attend will be in a very different position than if you've got a very low vaccine coverage. So, at the moment, we're working through what our approach to high school is, but we see high school is very different because we've had, we've had such fantastic vaccine uptake. And we know that our year elevens, our sixteen and overs have also got high vaccine coverage. So, we're just working on our international plans for both high schools and primary schools. And there will be a different approach noting the differential benefit of vaccination. I should like, should also say that the vaccination status of the community more broadly will also likely to be taken into account because clearly the risks are much lower if you've got very high parent population. And we wouldn't be encouraging anyone, encouraging everyone, but it's particularly important that, you know, parents, that parents and grandparents around children are vaccinated because that will reduce the risk. Most children are actually infected through the adults they come in contact with.
So, Dr. Chant, does that mean, do your comments mean then that there may be different approaches in different schools? That if there is an area where there's a case at a school with a lower vaccination rate in the broader community, there might be different requirements on them to close or to, for people to isolate than if there was a school that had a case in a higher vaccinated community?
All I'm saying is at the moment, we are working through to finalize our protocols. But clearly, I think you've seen, and I think, to be perfectly frank, it surprised me, we've got to actually fifty point five percent of our children, twelve to fifteen, have been vaccinated. A pretty outstanding result. And we've still got many weeks before school is, school is open. And that's one dose, but they'll get their second dose quite quickly. We will just be factoring some of those factors into account because it may be that you've got everyone in a, in a, in a classroom totally vaccinated. Will also be taken into account, the application of COVID safe plans. So, education's got very clear plans around mask wearing, using outdoor spaces, segregated classes. All of that will have to be factored into our assessment whether you fall into a close contact or what your risk is. So, it's just a new piece of the puzzle that we'll have to put in place and consider how vaccination has changed the risk to people. Because we know that these young people will respond generally very well to the vaccination and after two doses are likely to be highly protected.
So, what is the latest data then, Dr. Chant, on the rates of transmission? Given that there are going to be so many unvaccinated children in primary schools, what are the, what's the latest information on transmission in vaccinated versus unvaccinated people?
So, the issue is that we have got some data and I probably can just provide that to you on notice in an answer to the question, but clearly vaccination, so I just kind of to write the latest. It does vary by vaccine, so probably I need to just subset it by AstraZeneca, Pfizer and Moderna. But all of the vaccines have a significant effect in stopping transmission by both stopping symptomatic disease and potentially less likely to spread when you've, if you've got a breakthrough infection. So, I'd probably best to collate that for you so that I don't make any inaccuracies in that. But that, but that's the mechanism, but clearly.
Dr. Chant, if you have the documents to hand, rather than for you to collate it.
I'm just trying to find the vaccine effectiveness assumptions. Okay, so, all right, so.
That's fine, I'm happy for you to take that one on notice, Dr. Chant.
In terms of the vaccine effectiveness against overall asymptomatic and symptomatic infection, SARS-CoV-2 variant based on CEP 2021, AstraZeneca had effective asymptomatic and symptomatic infection after two doses. It's around sixty percent for AstraZeneca and for Pfizer, it's about seventy-nine percent. And onward transmission to household members after dose one, AstraZeneca's got about forty-eight percent, Pfizer's got forty-six after one dose, and after two doses, sixty-five and sixty-six. And combined vaccine effectiveness assumptions on transmission. So, the calculated overall reduction in transmission from one dose of AstraZeneca is fifty-seven percent. From AstraZeneca dose two is eighty-six percent. From Pfizer dose one is sixty-two percent. And Pfizer dose two is ninety-three percent.
Thanks very much, Dr. Chant. Can I just, apologies for my doorbell in the background? Can I just ask a question, perhaps this is to Ms. Pearce? In terms of the two point five percent of health workers who are unvaccinated as at today's date, how many resignations have been received for those positions, from those, from those workers?
Again, I'd have to take that on notice, Ms. Hughes.
Okay, okay, all right. I'll hand back to my colleague, Ms. Sharp.
Thank you. Just two quick follow-ups from my previous questioning. In relation to the QR code and the mandatory nature of that, have you provided any advice to the government of full support or otherwise in relation to changing that after December?
As I indicated, we are looking currently at providing advice about what TTIQ looks at at seventy-eighty percent vaccination status and that we have not finalized that yet.
That's right, so just clarifying, there's been no advice provided to government about whether, about the removal of mandatory QR codes, that's what I'm checking. Thank you. My second, my second question is, in your, when you were, when you were talking before about the TTIQ, you sort of used the words about, you know, obviously, there's sort of an evolution in the way that we do contact tracing and, and the way that that operates. Is that factored into the sort of New South Wales modelling around DOADY? Or is it sort of a, is this a New South Wales innovation?
Oh, it's very clear that the DOADY accepts that as you get higher case numbers, that you, that you're doing a modified contact tracing, that you're doing partial TTIQ and that's factored into the DOADY considerations when you get higher case burden. And also the DOADY modelling, in terms of the opening up, does not assume that you've segregated vaccinated from unvaccinated. So, that's another feature that's different. But we would know that having only vaccinated people together does reduce the risk given what I indicated the vaccine effectiveness is previously.
Yeah, so essentially, I mean, New South Wales is trying different things in this space. It's not necessarily set out in the modelling, but it would argue is consistent with the TTIQ and the DOADY modelling. Is that, is that something to me?
And potentially the step to only have vaccinated people gives us an added assurance as well as the work we're doing to get vaccine coverage up as quickly as we can. There are many factors that play into these considerations. And as I've said, having the period, that four to six week period after we get to the eighty percent will be really important for us to see the impact flow through in terms of case numbers and impact on hospitalisations.
And so, just to clarify, given that we're one week away from seventy percent, are you sort of, does that mean that really you're not expecting any cha, any changes to TTIQ before then? Or, or, you know, that we're really looking at eighty percent before those changes take place?
Look, as I said, we're currently putting advice to government about being very clear about what TTIQ looks at at seventy percent. I just wanted to reflect that we've had to evolve contact tracing quite rapidly over this period. We've learnt what is the main, I should just stress that we've had to prioritize contact tracing to the groups that we know are likely to contribute most to transmission onward. And what we know is that's going to be households. Currently, most of the high-risk premises are actually not open.
Thanks, sorry, thank you, Dr. Chant, the clock, the clock's ticking. And I know that my colleague, Mr. Graham, has a couple of questions, so I might just cut you off there. I appreciate that, I'm sorry to be so rude.
Thank you. I might just pick up on that last point. Given the changes, potential changes which might happen to TTIQ or tracing in particular, automation moved to an SMS, a focus on staff rather than customers was one of the things you've touched on today and referred to yesterday. What protections will be in place for businesses and for workers to avoid what we've seen over the years? That pandemic phenomenon?
Probably, could you just clarify what phenomenon you're referring to?
I'm referring in particular to the UK pandemic phenomenon, which really saw automated notifications to, particularly to UK staff and businesses really facing staff shortages as people were notified and then had to immediately isolate. What protections will be in place as you automate the system here to avoid that?
Can I just say the system's actually been automated, and as I said, this has been evolving system. So, for many months now, we've actually been texting people. So, we get the notification coming in from the laboratories, we text people. Where there's a disconnect in the number, we try and trace back to get a reliable number for the SMS text. We indicated that we've been embedding a few key questions in that initial SMS text to allow us to get to the highest priority individuals, so people that may have been working whilst they've been infectious, what, that might be working in high-risk industries like healthcare. And I'm just grateful that the community's been embracing and helping. And I'm just grateful that the community's been embracing and, you know, a large proportion of the community's been responding to those SMS texts. So a lot of this, the way we will be doing things in the future, just builds on some of the work that we've put in place as we've had to respond to a high caseload environment. But I think the important thing is that we know that households are the greatest risk of transmission.
So I'd take that answer, Dr Chan, just to, I think what you're saying is we're building on where we were. We won't see major changes to that as a result. That's really the message to those businesses.
That's correct, although progressively we've been factoring in the fact that business has really still stepped up and embraced some additional technologies, such as in some businesses have embraced rapid antigen tests. Other businesses have, you know, even further strengthened their COVID safety plans. And in other businesses, they've got extremely high rates of vaccination. So all of those factors then will help us calibrate and be proportionate in terms of our response in those settings. And we'll have to adjust our risk matrix or how we define things, taking those factors into account. But this is going to be a work in progress as we learn. But the whole highest feature is to make sure we prevent as much transmission as we can to keep the transmission in the community as low as possible. But individuals have a key role in that. And we will be continuing to urge individuals with symptoms to get tested and to isolate, not just soldier on. Some of those behaviours that we had perhaps before the COVID pandemic, I hope to put to bed once and for all going forward.
If you've finished that line of questioning, I'll hand over to Ms Ferman.
Thank you, Chair. Dr Chan or maybe even Ms Pearce for this question. What's the current percentage of cases in children, basically people under twenty? Roughly.
If you, it's a high proportion, I'll just call up the data for you, actually, I've got it. Okay, so in terms of the such a calculated, but I can say that in the naught to nine age group, would you like that on the last fourteen days or since the outbreak began?
The last fourteen days is fine.
So in the last fourteen days in the naught to nine age group, and this is started as of eight PM on the twenty ninth of September, we have two thousand three hundred and forty six cases in naught to nines. And in the ten to nineteen year old age group, we have two thousand one hundred and seventy six cases.
Okay, thank you. So and of those, like in terms of in hospitals, do you have that as well?
I'll just take you a moment to call it up if that's okay with you.
Sure, just while you're finding that, I just have a general question around why the current ICU numbers don't include PICU or NICU, the paediatric intensive care units? Is there a reason for that?
My understanding is that they do include those, but I would have to, if you have any different information, I'd have to issue that. But certainly.
I just have the, I have the COVID nineteen risk monitoring dashboard printout from the twenty eighth of September two thousand and twenty one here. And under healthcare settings, it does say that the current ICU number does not include PICU or NICU, does not include the PICU and the NICU per hand side.
Look, I would have to take that on notice. I think we're very transparent with our data, that wasn't, I wasn't aware of that. I'm not, can't confirm that, but let's take that on notice. We, I think we've clearly reported when we have children in ICU and it's important piece of information for the public. Could I also just indicate, and I know this was after the previous inquiry and I apologize that it's been delayed, but the National Centre for Immunisation Research has done frequently asked questions on the disease, vaccines and schooling. That's now uploaded on the NCRS website. So I'll get someone to provide that to you because I know that you have a keen interest in the evidence around children and transmission and vaccines and other aspects. And that's the frequently public, you know, it's for consumers for that document.
Thank you, because I think, so do we get those numbers in terms of hospitalisation?
So I'll just have to go to the crisis summary, apologies, I'll just be a moment for that.
Yes, I don't think it works in the answering.
Because I have to go to the Excel spreadsheet and pull that off.
Are we closed? Otherwise we'll.
Perhaps if you ask a different question and I'll keep trying to find the ICU rate.
I tried to do that, then I realised it's also distracting, so I thought I'd give, I thought I would give you a moment. But I, just that I would go then into the school setting. I know some questions have been asked about this quite a bit before. But I did want to check on New South Wales Health's involvement in the audit of classrooms for ventilation and where that's up to.
The Department of Education is under taking that ventilation audit. And we are, so that's run by them. And I understand they are seeking expert ventilation advice as well in relation to those audits.
Have you provided them any kind of recent information about HEPA filters or any type of filters or air purifiers for those classrooms? For classrooms?
No, we haven't provided specific advice about that. We've clearly indicated that ventilation is a key component. It's one of the risk mitigation strategies alongside other strategies. It's very important that there is not one silver bullet. It is really a multi-layered approach. And they have done the audit and are seeking their own expert advice on air, the things that they need to put in place to enhance ventilation.
Dr Chan, you are aware that with the New South Wales Parliament looking at sitting, hopefully in a COVID safe way over the next few weeks, that a key part of that was to ensure that there was appropriate ventilation in the Legislative Council, particularly obviously the Legislative Assembly as well. But to make sure that there were eight fresh changes of air within every hour in terms of safety, that we essentially had to make sure that that was operating to be deemed COVID safe. Why aren't we getting the same sort of advice for other key public buildings, including schools?
I'm not saying that that isn't the case, that schools don't understand the importance. This, our Department of Education colleagues are leading that work and they very much appreciate the importance of air exchange and are taking steps to undertake an audit. So I think those questions are best directed at them. But I have no question that they don't understand the importance of ventilation as one of the hierarchies of control and are taking the audit, I understand they're auditing all of the spaces in schools. And that that's due to be completed very shortly and they will take the lead on what steps need to be taken in relation to that factor.
But if parliamentarians are being told, politicians are being told that to return to work in a COVID safe way, part of that is to ensure that we have sufficient ventilation in the buildings that we are going to be sitting in, in the chamber. Why, what type of advice have you provided to other departments in relation to ventilation? Particularly, I suppose, in terms of workspaces, but education was a question I asked before. But what about workplaces?
Certainly we've provided clear advice and work safe has a key role in this, is that ventilation is a key. And we've embedded a section on ventilation in all of our COVID safety plans and updated that information, highlighting the importance of ventilation. I believe that there is World Health Organisation guidance and I can find out what additional information that WorkSafe and have provided in relation to ventilation. So I would expect people have due regard to the guidance that's being issued in terms of air exchanges. And it is a matter for expert ventilation of parishial physicians about how that is achieved most effectively in those workplaces, including, and in schools, the Department of Education has crossed all the evidence. We've been to many joint meetings with experts in ventilation and people that have discussed that. So I'm confident that education understands the importance of achieving adequate ventilation in schools and has taken steps to do that. But it's a matter for them to comment on the specifics of the findings of their audit, which I don't know has concluded yet.
Because just back to the schools and children then, in my limited time available. If you were saying, you were saying that in the previous fortnight, zero to nine years old, we've had two thousand three hundred and forty six cases of COVID. Then from in years ten to nineteen, we've had two thousand one hundred and seventy six cases of COVID. So when we reopen and to quote the Premier, cases go through the roof. What proportion of the cases that go through the roof do we expect to be within the under twenties and particularly within the under twelves, considering they won't be vaccinated?
So first to answer your question, the ten to, the twelve to nineteen year olds, I'm hoping we see a rapid decline in the case numbers in the twelve to nineteen year olds post vaccination, given the efficacy, the likelihood efficacy of the vaccine in that population, given the evidence is that it's quite highly immunogenic, has got high immunogenicity. Apologies for stumbling over my words. And in relation to children, we will see cases in children that are attending primary school. So there will be cases in the community and children attending primary school will have, be subsequently diagnosed. That will be reduced if we can reduce the community transmission risk associated with COVID. And it will also be reduced if we can, the consequences of that will be reduced if we can ensure parents and grandparents around those children are vaccinated.
Dr Chan, yes, but like at the moment, with the restrictions in place now, we've had two thousand three hundred and forty six cases of COVID between up until the year age of nine, two thousand three hundred and forty six, when we open up, that's the age group is where cases actually will go through the roof. Particularly, as we said, with people not wearing masks indoors, like that is a concern.
Clearly, we are saying that there will be children, so the groups now that are going to be at risk of transmission are younger children. Now, we don't know that in terms of the overall burden of transmission, they don't contribute as as much as, say, for instance, the nineteen to thirteen, you know, sixteen to thirty nine year old age group in terms of the transmission risk. But they do contribute and they will be able to acquire it. But the best way, I mean, the majority of these children have acquired the disease from other adults. There will be some children that have acquired it from children. With Delta, we certainly see that. But the best way to protect our zero to nine year olds is make sure that we are well vaccinated around our nine, our younger children, but, sorry, under twelves. We need to protect.
Dr Chan, I think, Dr Lance, you might be not on mute again and we're getting a bit of feedback. Dr Chan, could you remind me again what proportion of twelve to fifteen year olds have had a single dose and what proportion have had a double dose of vaccination?
So look, the twelve to fifteen year olds, we've had fifty point five percent of twelve to fifteen year olds that have, as of yesterday, vaccinated, been vaccinated.
That's one dose.
One dose. And they will be completing their two doses quite quickly because they'll be predominantly Pfizer, which is a three week dose interval. And some will have got Moderna, which is a four week dose interval. So we'll see very rapid completion of the two doses. And I think it is.
Sorry, Dr Chan, had you finished?
I think it still is important that whilst we cannot underestimate the seriousness of COVID in children and I don't want to be seen in any way to walk away from that, it is important that we put it in perspective around the severity. And I would commend the frequently asked questions on the disease and vaccines and schooling so that parents can make those decisions.
We have that, Dr Chan, we have that, Dr Chan. You would be aware that parents across the state of students aged twelve to fifteen, as soon as it became possible to vaccinate, organised appointments to get the double vaccination in time for their children to return to school with the benefit of being doubly vaccinated. You would be aware that that had happened?
Yes, I'm very pleased to see the uptake that we had in vaccination.
Now midway through, they've been told that the return date has been advanced by a week. And has that is, I know I've had many, many, many parents contact me anxious about this because their child will not have the protection that they expected because the return date has been advanced by a week. What's your advice to those parents and their children?
So I think that parents need, I would just encourage those parents to talk through their concerns, read the document that I've indicated and make the decisions for them and seek some advice from their general practitioners as well. But they will, it's pleasing to see that the higher take of one dose and it's likely that one dose alone will also have some significant protection given the low rate of illness given in the twelve to fifteen year olds. So I think that I would be optimistic that a high proportion, given that we've got fifty percent now, that by the time we go back to school, remembering that school is going back in a phased way, will have completed their second dose.
Dr Chan, would, did you, did you give advice to the New South Wales Government to support the advancing of a week of return to school? Knowing as you do that parents had been booking in vaccinations so their children would be protected in accordance with the initial timeframe? Did you give advice supporting the government's decision to advance the return to school by a week?
I can't comment that I knew that parents were booking in to get the completed, but I'm very pleased to hear that that has been the case and I'm very pleased with the uptake. So the reality is that schools are an important, important and essential component. And, but I do encourage parents to appraise themselves of the evidence and to make informed decisions about their children.
Well, Dr Chan, I'm going to assist parents in making informed decisions by getting your opinion, your advice as the Chief Health Officer about what parents should do if they are in the process of having their children double vaxxed. But it won't be completed by the time that their child is returning to school because of the, because of the advanced return. Should parents be waiting the extra week so that their children are protected? Or should they be returning kids to school?
I would encourage children to attend school because of the importance of school. But I respect there may be circumstances that parents are particularly concerned and should discuss that with their health professional if there's underlying health conditions or other reasons why they've got concerns. I would also suggest that parents are aware of the disease in the community and the risks associated with that. And I'm very trusting that if we give parents information, they can make those decisions in an informed way. But I also acknowledge the other important mental health impacts of engaging with education, the educational impact. And so this is not only about balancing COVID risk and I can.
Dr Chan, you don't need to persuade me about the benefits of children going back to school. I can assure you, we've had a test case of that in my own household about how important school is. But, Dr Chan, did you give advice? Did you support the government's decision to advance the return to school by a week, given these factors? Simple question, did you support it?
The, I can't comment on conversations of crisis cabinet. I can just be basically saying that the risk, that is a risk, vaccination is a risk mitigant. The fact that so many children have actually got one dose of vaccine is very pleasing and very important.
If you're not going to answer the question, that's okay, we'll move on to the next question. My next question is, initially, the New South Wales Education Department said that the advice from New South Wales Health was. said that the advice from New South Wales Health was that schools would not return where there was a level of disease in the community that met the CDC definition of pandemic, which I think is some fifty cases per hundred thousand over a fortnight period. Is that still the position of New South Wales Health? That schools should not be returning to face to face learning if that definition has been met?
We're currently providing updated advice to government on what would be the context and how to also factor in vaccination stays in that and how to factor in other risk mitigates, including rat testing. So currently that is a work in progress and we're urgently progressing that. And we hope to be able to update the community on that shortly.
Well, Dr. Chan, this was the position of New South Wales Health and New South Wales Education Department as recently as a week ago. Are you saying that that is now under review? Or are you saying that is changed? Or are you saying the position is as it was stated by the Minister and New South Wales Health, New South Wales Education officials are aware of it? I don't understand.
I'm saying that we're looking at that threshold, particularly in the context of and other factors in the context of secondary schools because we now have the added benefit of higher uptake of vaccination, which will then, just reflecting on our considerations in terms of our approach to which schools, to, to, to schools and return to school. So at the moment, as you'd expect us to do, we're looking at the data every day and we're just updating them.
Dr. Chan, in the most recent outbreak since June, there have been more than, I think, sixty thousand COVID cases, is that right?
Yes, the updated data is fifty, as of twenty ninth September, fifty six thousand five hundred.
Of those fifty six thousand cases, is it true that they will have to wait six months until they have access to vaccination, six months from testing negative?
So what we have provided to individuals is in accordance with Atagi advice is that natural infection affords protection for six months. But we are clear that there will be certain groups within that that can have vaccine at an earlier stage. But the reason we gave that communication as part of a stock standard noting that a medical practitioner can make individual assessments earlier than that was to ensure that people were able to go about their business if they didn't, if their advice was from their practitioner not to have a vaccine earlier, given the mandatory vaccination requirements. But in some circumstances, doctors will advise that they get vaccinated, say, two months after that or three months, and, and that advice has been what we've done in places like Wilt Canya and other places where notwithstanding natural infection, we have clearly advised that it would be more prudent to be vaccinated because we know vaccine will afford good, good protection.
So those fifty six thousand people who have had COVID, many of them in Western and South Western Sydney, who have been advised not to be vaccinated, will, will they have the same rights under the roadmap as vaccinated people?
Yes, they're treated as immune because, can I just be clear? That when you have a natural infection, the guidance, this is not us advising, this is the, a target advice that says you don't vaccinate them again immediately when you've just had COVID. What you do is you can vaccinate them into the future to give them more long lasting protection. Now, what we've said is that, yes, that's up to six months. But within that period, there is always room for that clinical decision making. But the leotard that was provided to them allows them to be not prevented from going to those venues and other things in this period because in essence they're immune because they've had naturally acquired infection.
So it's your understanding that they, if they wish to be out and about, they'll have to carry that letter, a letter with them? Is that the current arrangements?
That is the current arrangements that that letter would serve. It could be saved on their, as a photo on their device, but the concept is that, that they would have to produce, they would be under, if you look at our medical exemption form, which is on our website, you'll see that that has a temporary contraindication box on it. And having had recent COVID would be a temporary contraindication to just be immediate, to being immediately vaccinated because obviously clinicians would want them to recover and will make a decision about what is the appropriate time for re-vaccination. But I would encourage everyone who's recently had COVID to engage with their doctors in a discussion about when is the right time for them in their circumstance to get vaccinated.
Dr. Chan, unfortunately my time has expired. I'll hand you back to the opposition.
Thanks very much, Chair. Can I just ask you there, of the healthcare workers who are unvaccinated, are any of those, do any of those fall into that criteria that Mr. Shubridge was just outlining about because they have had COVID, they're not required to be vaccinated?
I don't know that we've got the specifics on that, Ms. Husos, but I mean, they would be treated as would anybody else. Should they have had COVID, then they would be treated in the same way as the general population irrespective of that.
Okay, if you could provide that to us on notice, that would be quite helpful. You have to say yes for it to be.
That's fine, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Chan, I wanted to come back to the questions about schools and the ventilation in schools. Is it correct, so you, when you said that the Department of Education is receiving expert advice on ventilation, that advice is not coming from New South Wales Health, is that correct?
So New South Wales Health does not have particular expertise in many elements of, whilst we have engineers and our health infrastructure and other bits that can provide advice internally, I understand that the Education Department is engaging their own ventilation experts around what solutions are best in the settings if they find there's issues with ventilation. So that's really very much our engineering expertise, given the parameters of air exchange and other things are set up. So that's the way that I understand that is progressing.
Okay, thanks very much, Dr. Chan. I wanted to ask about a couple of other issues. How many extra health staff have been recruited back from retirement?
I'm just, it's Kerry Chan, I have to defer to my colleagues, but we might, and we might have to take that question. Could we take that question on notice if that's okay?
I'm a stop to lines. Nigel, can you?
I think we'll have to take that on notice.
Do you have an update as to when you believe the peak in COVID cases requiring hospitalisation and intensive care treatment will occur?
Look, with respect to the modelling information on that, as you know, we publicly released our modelling with respect to the peak some weeks ago. Pleasingly at the moment with a decline in cases. You know, we haven't, we're not running it routinely in terms of use because at the moment what we've done is run the model planned, I suppose, for the worst case scenario, as was predicted at that particular point in time. It stands to reason that with declining cases, given that case numbers are a very significant input into our model, that you would see the number coming down. What we can say is that the actual hospitalisation numbers versus the predicted are substantially lower. And the number of actual ICU cases now are lower than was predicted in the model that we publicly released a number of weeks ago. So it's very pleasing to see, because of our very high vaccination rates, we, we are confident about where we're at at the moment in regard to that. We're watching it very carefully. We watch our ICU bed numbers as you appreciate around the clock. They are, the number of COVID cases in ICU is coming down. And that's why the actual line is starting to depart away from the predicted. So that's, you know, that's very pleasing to see that at the moment.
That is excellent news for everybody. Can I just ask you about the Mass Vaccination Centre at Wollongong? What's the current capacity that it's operating on? How many vaccines is that doing a day?
Look, I haven't got the figures on a daily basis, Ms. Husos. Certainly, what I can say though is that we've provided and have been providing the Illawarra Health District, Shoalhaven Medical Health District with some additional vaccine in, in the most recent last couple of weeks. We're obviously very focused on ensuring that they're vaccinating vulnerable, particularly vulnerable groups of people in the Illawarra. And we've made arrangements for additional vaccine to go to them just as late as last Friday. So that, that's good news for them as well.
But do you have an average of what, how many vaccinations are being done per day?
Not in front of me at the moment. I could certainly take that on notice and provide that information to you.
I, my understanding is that when it was opened, it would, it said it would be doing two thousand five hundred a day. Is that, would that be accurate? Is it doing roughly that at the moment?
I believe that it was around that number, yes, when it was opening. And they've been doing a lot of work down there, obviously offering the vaccine. And, you know, you'll note that supply of vaccine is a significant factor in terms of what our system is capable of doing as we have demonstrated. When we've had supply of vaccine, we have, have been able to deliver very, very large amounts of vaccine through our hubs. So an Illawarra is no different to that.
But Ms. Pity, you aren't able to give us any insight into an average number?
Not at the moment, I'm sorry. I don't have any information off now.
My time's about to expire, so I just have one final question. Dr. Chan, obviously sewage testing across regional communities has been really important in detecting where, where there might be cases undetected. How many regional communities, is it being conducted in all regional communities across New South Wales now? And how long will that be continued for?
So I can provide the list of the communities in which it's done. And I think we've released the sewage testing data publicly, but I can happy to provide that to the committee. Again, like all things, we all have to review the utility of the sewage surveillance. So once the disease becomes more endemic, then the utility of that sewage surveillance may change or how we use it may change. So for instance, it might give us an idea if we're seeing escalated case numbers in a community. So we may still have sentinel towns where we're monitoring for increases in the sewage viral load, which would give us an idea that we're seeing more unrecognized disease transmission. So we are going to have to evolve how we use the sewage surveillance. As you know, we switched the sewage surveillance from Sydney to metropolitan, to rural, regional to enable us to have that early warning. And again, we'll have to change how we use it again. And to some extent, that will take us a little bit of time to work through what is the best way and how sewage surveillance can inform both our public messaging and public action like around testing, promotion or, or other things. So having, we've got some thoughts, but we'll have to again, you know, bring those experts together to best have the fit. But I'm really pleased at the scale up of the regional sewage detection we've got, got in place at the moment.
Ms. Famine?
Thank you. Dr. Chan, do you keep statistics in relation to the number of people who are living with disabilities who are vaccinated? Is that statistics collected?
The Commonwealth website has data on the number of people in, I think it's, I would have to refresh my memory, but they've got data on disability workers and disability, people that are in disability settings. I'm not sure that that covers everyone with a disability, but that's probably a subset, which is important data. And I know that there's a lot of work underway to improve the coverage. And there are current gaps in the levels of vaccination in those with a disability. And that's certainly another focus area that we want to work alongside the Commonwealth in addressing.
They were originally going to be a part of the priority group, is that right? And then that, that slipped down the level of priority for people with a disability?
My understanding, you know, was that the Commonwealth had prioritised disability alongside aged care. So that's probably a matter for the Commonwealth. It's certainly been a priority for New South Wales Health to do all we can to vaccinate people with a disability. And when I mean disability, I mean of all, instead of people with differing needs and different approaches to get vaccinated.
I'm aware that there, sorry, was there something else? No. I'm aware that there has been some outbreaks in supported housing. I've got a tweet, in fact, in front of me where somebody has said that, this is on the twenty fifth of September of the eleven dead yesterday. There were eight of us who were in this supported housing where there were cluster style homes with communal areas. They said, we are dying like flies in our homes. These are group homes. Do you know about that situation?
Look, I'm really distressed by that. And if you could provide perhaps the details will, will emerge immediately get the district to follow them up. I'm aware that there are some complex situations being dealt with in Illawarra, Shoalhaven, the Wollongong area. I know that we've had challenges in others, but that does not resonate with something I know about at the moment. But I'm just really distressed that you've got that. So could you please provide that immediately after this hearing? So we can respond to those needs?
Yes, I would love to do that. What's the, do you know, so do you have vaccination rates for places like supported housing? Has there been additional effort that is going into, to areas of, yes, supported housing?
Look, there's been incredible effort being done. And just to let you know, we're also monitoring the, we're monitoring our vaccination rates across many indices to ensure that we've reached the most vulnerable. So we've also done analysis by what's called the SEFAR index, being, one being the most disadvantaged to five being the most advantaged to make sure that we've got even spread and high rates across all of those. And some of our districts have done, except all of our districts have done well in minimizing disparity. But some have actually reversed the trend and have higher rates in the most disadvantaged compared to the advantaged, which is so pleasing. So some of our districts, for instance, Sydney, I'm aware of, have recently gone in and vaccinated, had intensive efforts across their social housing, working in partnership with their AMS Redfern at trying to ensure there's good access to the Aboriginal community in Redfern and Waterloo areas. I know that Margot Manning's, the CEO of the local health district in Wollongong, is doing a lot of intensive effort around this social housing. And I know that we're doing work in the boarding houses, homelessness.
I can actually add some comments, Ms. Famine, because this is information that we're closely looking at. So NDIS, NDIS participants over sixteen years of age, this data I've got in front of me is around sixty seven percent first dose. NDIS participants living in disability accommodation, seventy five percent first dose. And NDIS participants living in residential aged care facilities are eighty one point five. Now, that's back on the tenth of September, so I would expect those numbers to be increased by now. As Dr. Chan said, all of our local health districts, I mean, this is a partnership. Again, the Commonwealth Government is, is participating in this in a very significant way. We have, I get, opened our doors in our vaccine centres to disability workers for many, many months. And it didn't matter whether they worked for us or worked for, for any other organisations. And indeed, for people with disabilities, we've vaccinated people in the car parks of our vaccination centres if they couldn't get inside. So that we could, you know, if, if a group came, for example, in a bus or something like that, we would vaccinate those people in the car park. The Blacktown Hospital has got a, for example, a low sensory clinic for people who can't tolerate noise and, and bright lights and the like, so that they can come there and get vaccinated. But we're really in the space now of going to the people because we recognise that not everybody can come to us and that's a very important part of our strategy. But as I say, the, the districts are collaborating with primary health networks in particular for housebound persons so that we can get to them. But the Commonwealth rates vaccination in disability group homes pleasingly has improved quite substantially over the last couple of months. quite substantially over the last couple of months. So I expect to see that continue. And particularly given now that the vaccination rates in residential aged care facilities is very high and that work is essentially, look, it'll never be complete because obviously you've always got to, you know, move with people coming in and going out. But the focus is very significant with respect to the disability sector.
Thank you for that detailed answer. Dr. Chant, before there's an agreement to open up parts of regional New South Wales with significant Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander communities in them, would you commit to sitting down with those local Aboriginal medical services in places like Brorona and Burke and Morey and ensuring they support the opening up of their communities before public health orders are lifted to allow for people to travel to those communities? Will you commit to sitting down with those Aboriginal medical services?
Well, I'll take a point of order at that stage, Mr. Shubridge. That's a policy issue that is even beyond the Chief Health Officer to answer. That's a matter to direct to the Health Minister.
Well, I hear your point of order, but I'm asking...
procedural fairness and the rules of procedural fairness, I think it is Rule 10 specifically deals with public servants being asked matters relating to policy. I think that's quite unfair.
Well, just to respond, my question isn't about the decision about opening up. My question is about whether or not the Chief Health Officer will commit to the process and the procedure of sitting down with Aboriginal medical services. It's quite different to whether or not the ultimate decision is made, that's a matter of government.
Well, with respect, that's not how you framed the question, David, that is not how you framed it.
Well, I will reframe it if that is a concern. Dr. Chant, would you commit to sitting down with those Aboriginal medical services in places like Brorona and Burke and Morey to sit down and speak with them, hear their concerns, hear their views, before a decision is made by government, not by you, to open up those regional communities to travel?
Can I just say that I will continue to be available to talk to AMSs and the Aboriginal Community Control and work closely. The Centre for Aboriginal Health is part of the whole of government. Aboriginal Affairs are very committed to supporting Aboriginal communities. I've recently had a teleconference, a video Skype links with some of the Aboriginal Community Control in northern New South Wales to hear their concerns and discuss issues with them. And I would send that to all Aboriginal committees and Aboriginal AMSs with my colleagues. Just want to acknowledge the work that our districts are doing. And this is really very much a partnership with the Commonwealth as well. And at that teleconference, Commonwealth representatives were all also there to hear about some of those issues. So I'd be very happy, as I have across the pandemic, to hear the concerns so that we're well briefed about them and, you know, genuine commitment to see Aboriginal immunisation coverage as high as possible.
Dr. Chant, my final question is this. On the last occasion...
David, figure, like, your time's expired. We are over the timeframe set for this. Like, I'm not quite sure how these continue to get extended out and extended out. Time has expired.
I think there is a final question, which I will put in.
Fair, David, you have been advised that time has expired.
I think we are somewhat over time.
All right, well, perhaps we'll put it by way of a supplementary question. Dr. Chant, Dr. Lyons, Ms. Pearce, thank you for your attendance today. As again, I say, on behalf of the committee, we appreciate your work, extraordinary level of work throughout the pandemic. And we, of course, all collectively wish you every success going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As I have been reminded by Mr. Khan, we have unfortunately run out of time for this session. And as a result of which, today's Harry will conclude. Thank you.